The meeting is January sixth, twenty twenty five.
Hey.
And it is five thirty P M and we're going to be starting our regular work session. And we will start with a city update from Mister Brian McCain.
Thank you, ma'am. I have quite a bit from Parks and Rec tonight. So as far as sports goes, there's an open gym Tuesdays and Wednesdays at five to eight P M. At Bethlehem Pueblo for all middle school and high school players. The fee is free. And Bethlehem Pueblo is a ten forty four school street. It's also an open gym Fridays and Saturdays. From one to five P M at Bethlehem Pueblo for all ages. And again, this is free. The Winter Adult Cornhole League Thursday evenings, January twenty third through March twenty seventh. Registered by January sixteenth. The fee is fifty dollars per double team. You can register online at pueblo.us/parks or my phone seven nine five five three twenty seven ninety. Or in person at the Parks Advent Building in City Park. And aquatics and American Red Cross classes. Lifeguard essential skills Tuesdays and Thursdays at seven to seven thirty P M February twenty fifth through March twenty. Registration, January twentieth through February twentieth. The fee is forty dollars per participant. First aid and CPR certification certification course March ninth at ten to three thirty P M. Registration, January twentieth through February twenty seventh. The fee is eighty dollars per participant. You can register online at pueblo.us/parks or by phone at seven one nine five five three twenty seven ninety. And El Centro Senior Social Wednesdays from ten to eleven A M Movement and Mobility. Volleyball for youth Saturday afternoons, January eighteenth through February twenty second for ages eleven through eighteen years old. Registration deadline for this is January ninth. Fee thirty dollars per player. The fitness games will be Wednesdays from six thirty to seven thirty starting January fifteenth through February twelfth for ages six through ten. Registration deadline is January eighth and the fee is twenty five dollars per participant. Basketball skills Fridays from twelve to four P M starting January third for middle school and high school players. Fee is free. And Zoom is Monday through Thursday from five thirty to six thirty P M. Fee is two dollars per drop in for class or thing for H one class pass. And again, you can register for these ones online at pueblo.us/parks by phone at seven one nine five five three twenty seven ninety. Or in person at El Centro del Quinto Sol at six nine eight sixth street. Last week, Pablo Transit announced a new service offering. Your partnership with Commute with Entertise, Pablo Transit is helping children through an innovative and sustainable transportation solution, manfully. Pablo Transit is offering funding for further revenues, uh further revenues expenses of this already cost efficient form of community. Pablo Transit received grant funding from the Colorado Department of Transportation. Little, uh one time little option program plans to operate the Vantil program through December thirty first to twenty sixth. Children in the Pablo area interested in joining the Vantil program, go to W W W dot commute with entertise dot com. Or call Pablo Transit at seven one nine five five three twenty seven twenty five for more information. And I would like to remind everyone that those child passenger safety standards have been updated as of January first of this year. Refacing car seats must be used for children under two and less than forty pounds. Must be in backseat if one is available. You can continue this practice even if they're older than two and over forty pounds, as long as the child restraints allow for it. And then also effective this year for everyone to be aware of is a new Colorado law that could prevent drivers from using cell phones while you're driving. So calm down. You'll get a ticket. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Um anything from council this evening? Um, Councilor Flores.
As all of you know, I had scheduled an economic forum back on November the eighth in which we had that huge snowstorm. And uh my two speakers couldn't even get on I twenty five. They had blocked it. Well, my economic forum is tomorrow. It starts at seven. Breakfast is from seven to seven forty five, but we have the same issue. Uh we're gonna have a lot of snow. I don't think God wants me to have the economic forum. But I just want to remind everyone, I've got, I do have a hundred eighty five people RSVP'd, so hopefully they'll be able to get there from Pueblo. Uh we'll probably lose some because of, I I thought it was gonna be minimal snow, but somebody said it could be six to eight inches. So I don't know if that's true, but uh you're all invited. Um if you, nothing else, breakfast is free from seven to seven forty five and then the programs seven forty five to nine thirty. So if you're working, you can still get back to work. But I just wanted to reiterate that if anybody's interested.
I think last year, didn't we invest, um council approved, um some high tech equipment to have Zoom meetings and so forth at the conference center through ARPA funding? So are they going to be able to zoom in?
Yes, and I should have mentioned that uh there is a link now uh that it'll be live streamed. It'll be recorded too, so it could be live streamed, not it could be uh streamed on our channel. It'll be on channel seventeen and there is a link uh. And I'll uh I'll look it up here. Let's see if I, I just got this from uh Aaron, so I know. Hold on. Yeah, the the link is uh is uh it's a pretty long one, but it will be on the link. I I talked to Haley and she's gonna put that on our website. Uh so if people wanna see it, it'll be on channel seventeen. And it'll be live streamed if they just wanna get online. And there's a link. It's uh V I M E O dot com slash event. And then there's a number there, four eight two eight zero six three. And then that'll get you directly into the program.
Your guest speakers are, are they gonna?
For Tatiana Bailey and then Susie Miller, who was the executive director of the Colorado uh Employment Consortium.
Okay.
And so uh they'll they'll be the two speakers.
And they'll be able to zoom in if they can't get on the highway.
Uh Susie Miller just drove down today. It's a hotel. And Tatiana lives in Monument. I'm really worried about her, so. But she could probably get on Zoom if we had to do that.
Okay, all right. Anything else from council or Councilor Latino?
All right, this is appropriate, but I I spent some time this week uh well, last week actually, dealing with the uh one of the administrative assistants to the uh Colorado Supreme City Council. And uh my concerns uh are thus. We have vandals in the morning, last week or the week before, and I I I'm getting debates because I I'm I'm you know, I wouldn't be accurate in that, but have we had calls and vivid with some of the bridges and downtown basically in the and uh they're doing some things in spring and I also visited with counsel A L F who kind of updated and informed that we do have a city code or city such as related to that. Um about the homes uh standing, sitting, laying down, camping on the city streets. And uh it's time for folks to consider the tough. I have compassionate heart. I really do. Now, when I help the people in this community, especially merchants or the citizens in this community, remind folks that are homeless and have had opportunities, we still have some of the things that this city council has done. My things are going to improve and put them to work, which Catholic Charities has. And my understanding is that uh we started out with sixty members, sixties homeless people working and it's down to seventeen. Now, I could be wrong in that fact as well. Um because I haven't visited with uh Phil Mitchell by telephone. But uh we have to do something about the security of this community, in particular for the merchants and the people in the van room. Because we have a lot of these homeless people and they're taking advantage of our homelessness. And uh they're not, they're not helping the needs of this community. We spoke with the the uh one or two administrative assistants to the Colorado Supreme City Council. We had that conversation. You can't lie down. You can't point up and stand around on the city streets and downtown streets. So I I needed to bring that up and 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 that's where I am with this, and I hope that we will push to do some things that to tighten up the security. I remember we did a great job a while back and and do the founder create and and she deserves a lot of credit for that. And uh um we need to do those kind of things. I have a compassionate heart. We're here with us. But it's time for us to get tough about the security of this community. Thank you.
Um, anything else from council? Okay, let's move on with our first presentation, which is going to be from President Aliff and Mister McCain regarding um the Bessemer Ditch. Are you involved in it? Okay.
I'm sitting in the hot seat for this one.
Um, this is a hot, this is a hot seat situation?
Yes, it is. Um I printed out this presentation so you don't have to squint to see some of the pictures up there. I know they're in the small, um I didn't use as many as my shopping cart presentation, but I did get a few in there. So uh towards midsummer, beginning of the summer, um Councilor Aliff and various constituents called um complaining about flooding issues in the basements of the Bessemer Ditch. And also flooding of the golf course. So past three months, we've been taking a look at that and actually meeting with some of the Bessemer Ditch board members as well, but um I was asked to put this presentation together for him, so we'll kick it off here. Just a little bit of a history on the Bessemer Ditch. Uh the water riots, they're dating back before Colorado was a state. It was incorporated in eighteen eighty eight. Construction began in eighteen eighty nine, nineteen twenty one. The flood destroyed most of the ditch through town, uh destroyed a lot of the records and all that that everybody knows about here. Then with the prior project, like construction of Lake Pueblo Dam, cause the ditch is asleep in the nineteen seventies. Ironically, the water that was being discharged from the reservoir was cleaner than it had to sell. And Bessemer Ditch was losing up to forty percent of the water by the time it got to the Mesa. So this prompted them to contact the feds. Um nineteen eighty, Congress appropriated one point five million to line roughly eight thousand feet of the ditch with gunite throughout Pueblo. You can see that there. So within this public talk, um July ninth meeting, um the maintenance and replacement clauses, I guess you could say, that's where your game ditch, which Jones operates and maintains, that's where the shop will be responsible for the or replacing the complete gunite lining authorized by this act. Now, this was the first eighteen thousand feet that the feds gave them money to line. It actually went further than the eight thousand feet. Um but that was nineteen eighty. So fast forward to about nineteen eighty eight. The feds gave another one point two million with the city and Bessemer Ditch investing twenty two percent of that, bringing that to one point five million and this lined another eleven thousand feet of the ditch with the gunite lining. If you look here, I actually have the council resolution when we bring it along with the public lot. Some bit of history for Pueblo. Again, we started getting into some construction classes, both continuing about the golf course and their basement. So it's a little bit of fun here. This is obviously, this presentation is focused on the issues with city assets, like City Park, the golf course. But I just thought I'd share some of these pictures. Um this is somebody's basement. So actually from the video, you can see the water, that second picture from the left there. But the two pictures on the right were sinkholes that we saw on city property that started popping up along the ditch throughout town. There are a few that were in the road and along sidewalks as well that we had to repair, um in which you can't repair that until after the ditch water, the levels go down. Later in the summer, uh Susan Meyer can speak on this more if there's any questions, but the annex building at City Park, which is the building by the tennis courts, not the bathhouse, but the one further up by the parking lot. They had, there were six employees and they were now part timers. And Susan Meyer called me and said, we gotta get these people out of there. There's black mold. So the ditch was sleeping into the basement. There's about two inches of water there. They installed two sump pumps. And just over the course of a few months, you saw that black mold. Those pictures just grow. And last week to take pictures, I don't have any of the waters going through it, but you can see one of these slides here. Um there's some pumps are installed in that annex building and I took a picture of this parking lot. If you see where the the white, this coloring goes down, so one of the sump pumps comes directly out of the parking lot and it goes pumping in and going for a second. That's on the one the ditch is flowing. So that's water coming from the ditch into the uh annex building there in City Park. There's some more big pictures of the basement that you can see. There's the two sump pumps. If you look around and you can see the water level coming in, it's like a few inches of it there. Um the one in the middle is like a cabinet and lockers that are elevated. Again, that's two inches. You can see the water in the middle. That's sat there all summer in that annex building and it's no longer safer for uh safer for the employees to work in there due to the black mold. So we've moved them to the the ditch building right now. We got them out of there. Um but we can't let people work in there in this condition anymore. On the slide, here is an aerial photo that we took. Just taken in July. Um we get pictures of City Park and and the city and property. I think it's every six months, and this was from July this year. About when you saw the the water level rise, the highest and complaints coming in. If you look along, that's the golf course, uh just north of the ditch there. I drew arrows where we went down. Um President Aliff and I went down on the golf cart and took some pictures later in September. But this is basically where the flow of water is going. Um if you look on the side where that white circle is, that's near that annex building in the bathhouse north of that. Um there is some, you can see, I don't know if it's runoff or discharge or what in the parking lot there, but there's water flowing through there to that entire parking lot and again through the golf course from the ditch. So zoom in and you can see a little better. Um if you squint, you can almost see where the water is going on. It's almost like a topographical map of river formations, but all that brown area on the north side there, that was under, would you say, two inches of water as a move all summer?
Awesome, yeah.
All summer long. Um so again, this picture is from July. You can see it. Last week I took a, uh those pictures were also when President Aliff when I went down in September, you could see the water. It's dropped down a bit, but this is the holes that you can see going on to that uh golf course area and parking lot. It seems the um run on the left, obviously the waters drop a little bit. You can see the lines where it ran and the one on the far right. That's a lower hole damage on the ditch that basically drains straight into the the ground. And uh, yeah. So that's what the golf course looks like now. Uh I took a walk on it. It is pretty bad shape. As you can see, the soil is clay solid almost, and you can see where the water came in from the bottom because it's not, that's not what soil looks like when there's water on top of it. That's what soil looks like when it comes up and there's some cracking in it. I have more pictures up close where you can kind of see. This is the ditch right now without the water. Just wanted to add some pictures of some of the damage of the guy and deterioration and what it looks like now. So this is all along golf course, City Park. Um and on the lower right is the bridge close to the Pueblo Boulevard where you can see it going in that basically crumbled. And I looked at it. Uh I have some other hills. And again, along that area that's along the city asset, this is what we're seeing. The lower right hand picture, that is on the opposite end of the golf course. So you can just see where there is some runoff going down into that, but these other ones, that's on the golf course side and you can just see the deterioration going in. That water goes straight underground. We have some fence posts. We hooked them through. You can find the end of where that cavity is. And I know on top walking where sinkholes. Um I stepped on one sinkhole, passed my knee and just a hole that was a cavern underneath. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mister Jagger to summarize what we've been doing and the discussions we've had.
Yeah, so presently, the Bessemer Ditch does not acknowledge in disputes that it has an obligation to maintain or repair the gunite lining. Uh specifically, presently, it can be noted that pursuant to state law, the Bessemer Ditch has an obligation to quote, keep its ditch in good condition, end quote. That's under section seven forty two one oh eight. Uh Bessemer Ditch has previously communicated that such obligations limited to flume of the ditch, which wouldn't exist but for because if you have the lining, you're basically gonna have sand and it's gonna be flumed or other material. It does not extend to the lining of the ditch. But as Mark has reviewed for you on the public law ninety six three oh nine, the Act of Congress, the Justice Court authorized the installation of the gunite lining in nineteen eighty one and nineteen eighty eight provides, quote, the Bessemer Irrigating Ditch Company, which Jones operates and maintains the Bessemer Ditch, shall be responsible for maintaining or replacing the gunite lining authorized by the Act. Uh the Bessemer Ditch has recently communicated without addressing this public law that there was a contract entered into on July twenty third, nineteen seventy three, which somehow puts the financial responsibility for improvements to the ditch to prevent seepage solely on the city. And the city has communicated its position, but the seventy three contract has no relevance to this issue. That mostly related to maintenance of a bridge crossing and did not relieve the ditch of its obligation under state law to keep the ditch in good condition. Uh the Bessemer Ditch did obtain a bid in the amount of approximately eight hundred thousand dollars to address the gunite lining uh with respect to the issues in City Park. But it's communicated that it does not have the financial ability to proceed. Uh the city has discussed potentially alarming them the money for the performance of the project with their repayment over ten year period of loan interest. Uh the Bessemer Ditch has rejected such a type of loan in ways filed to communicate an alternative. So basically at at a standstill. So if not otherwise resolved, the next steps would be for the city attorney to retain outside counsel. Any such compensation would be presented and approved by council. Outside counsel would generally be retired, retained, advised the city as the best course of action to resolve the dispute, including when reviewing advise respect to the nature and scope of the ditches due to under federal law, state law and the contract uh to maintain and repair the gunite lining. With respect to any such duty, we review and advise us to available remedies, including land banes, which would be uh ready to have them forced to perform a legally obligated duty, which we would be maintaining would be maintenance of and replacement of the lining uh and or potentially tort claims for seepage or overflow and also review potential defenses, including limitations of actions. Irrigation ditches have special protections as it relates to tort claims and limitation periods. Uh in addition, we ask for review and advice as to prevent any illegal action, including Saint weather saying we filed in the federal court, given that the maintenance obligation that is set forth in our ways is in part under federal law. And reviewing advises the potential cost of such litigation and likelihood of success of such litigation. So with that, we'll take any questions or if we have any additions we want to make.
Questions from council. Councilor Flores.
Um, do they have any protection under the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act?
We can find none. The the issue that they've raised in the past is that it's a limitation period on tort claim. Uh these are things, though, it's kind of complicated dealing with an irrigation ditch company. And so these are the kind of the things that, well, being outside counsel who has experience dealing with them knows what can and cannot be pushed and also can review this federal law component to advise council. But we don't know government immunity applies to them.
Does the thought that the ditch existed before uh all the development around it got built, does that protect them in any way?
No, that'll be one of the things that they they claim is a defense, presumably. You move to the ditch, you come in, but there's still a tort and there's still an obligation. So if you have a legal obligated duty, you potentially still have tort claims. So these are the issues, though, that we would ask for outside counsel review. I think your bigger issue is gonna be what's the duty and what what are remedies if they're observed?
Because when you look at these photos, uh the 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 gunite that was used, it seems like it would have to be removed. It just seems like it's hollow underneath as the as the water's been seeping. Um that uh it's it's really much more than just going in and gun hiding it. It's almost like uh they're gonna have to read.
Take a look at their proposal. What they got for the pipeline was, I think, replaced, but I'd have to take a look, but they felt comfortable that that would that would do it. And that was what they did go out and they did obtain a bid as to what would be corrective. So we do have a bid of what would be corrective. And it's eight hundred thousand.
Are you saying that they they went ahead and admitted that they had a problem and they went out and?
Wow, now you're putting more words into that thing. What they did do is they did go out and get a bid for what would be the corrective action.
Right.
That's their position. We haven't even reviewed that. That would probably need to be reviewed by city staff also to say, yeah, this is gonna work.
Is there anything in any of these documents uh that that specify that uh that the city is responsible for the maintenance of the of the ditch and they are and they're, no, it's not their problem.
No.
Okay.
And on the, on that council forum, I actually pulled a C R S report um because that was once something that was said that the the city or third party was responsible and the C R S report came back based on the saying, no, it in fact, when the nineteen eighty eight funds were awarded and split with the city and the Bessemer Ditch and the federal government, what it did was authorize that the Bessemer Ditch could have a third party repair. So if somebody wanted to repair it or do some work on it, it basically made that legal for them to do. But it did not obligate them to it.
As I understand uh the city also owns stock in the ditch company. How does that affect us moving forward?
I haven't really reviewed that. I mean, what stock we own may be limited. I don't know if that affects our ability to vote on whether if litigation is brought, but it certainly does limit our ability to file litigation when we've been damaged.
And I guess lastly, uh are are you asking us uh, I mean, how do we proceed? Uh do you need?
I think it's just status update and next steps.
Okay.
And so unless there's some objection or some concern, I think the next step is we ta- we have two national forums we've reached out to, we feel comfortable with. I I talked to Carla and probably have one in mind. And then we'd reach out to them to provide, because they've already done conflicts checks and and the person they've identified has significant experience working with irrigation ditches. And uh so we feel comfortable with them and we'd ask for them to provide their uh a letter uh by a contract. Basically, an engagement letter and we give them the scope as I've I've already reviewed for you. And we come back to council on a resolution to approve the compensation of that. Compensation could be an hourly rate. The first step we'd have is is to have and review those issues and give you an idea of what litigation costs would be.
When they uh when they received your correspondence that we were looking at them for redress on this this damage and all of the other stuff, did they ever uh turn in a claim to their liability carrier?
That I don't know.
Yeah. Because I I had a, I had a similar claim when I was in the insurance business on a on a ditch like that and uh it caused considerable damage and the insurance company paid. Um, you know, it just seems like we we should force them to submit a uh or put their insurance carrier on notice.
Well, we're presently at a, at at a crossroads because presently they're saying it's not their duty to even maintain it.
At at the stage and you look at these pictures, it appears to me that they're they're not only negligent, they're grossly negligent and they're walking away from maintaining the the ditch.
And those will be some of the issues we'll have, we'll follow up as far as remedy, if available, and what limitations there may be.
Thank you.
President.
You know, thank you for the update. I mean, obviously, everybody needs to hear where we're at in this uh in in you know, quite frankly, the only way you can talk about it is that it's a debacle uh in the sense that it's really not understandable the damage that's being done below the ditch along that stretch which we just saw pictures of. You know, probably three months, three months out of the year, the golf course is virtually up, the three holes would be number three, four, parts of five, all of seven are unplayable. They're unplayable. So they literally lose all of the the green sleeves and I mean, people just don't wanna go over there and play because it's 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 so bad.
Hmm.
Let's take it further. Is that these homes that you're talking about along the the tennis courts, and I forget which street that is. I can never remember the name of that street.
Said uh Carla Avenue.
Collins Avenue. I mean, these people have invested thousands and thousands of dollars in their basements to pump out.
Over twenty thousand dollars in one house that was brought to our attention and to actually fix the situation. Um, they quote, they were quoted at I think thirty two thousand to get the proper pumps and remediation in there and that's just one house.
Right. Then you look at the city property of the annex building, you look at the damage that's been done to the bath bath house that has virtually rendered it unfixable. Uh, then you look at, we were going to put a tennis uh facility down there. And quite frankly, I think that the cost overwhelming that came specifically uh from the foundation that needed to be built in order to erect that building. You had to use these special uh helical spheres or whatever or whatever they call them uh to do that. And that was all a result of that. And then you think about, this is one of the most used facilities in all of Pueblo. When you go down that road that that leads into the Pueblo Zoo entrance around to the tennis courts and then back out to City Park. You have to wonder if there comes a time when you know, some big sinkhole is going to open up and swallow many then uh is going to swallow some tennis players, uh, a golf cart, whatever. And I know that you know, you never want to think about that. But we need to think about that because now we're at a at a place where uh this could be the result of the negligence of the irrigation company for not uh taking care of their asset. If you're just looking at it in layman terms, the ditch is not our asset. And I know in conversations that we've had with the ditch company, there are laws that say that seepage is a normal or any uh any ditch and that seepage happens along the ditch and they're not liable for that seepage. But I asked the question and I'll keep asking the question, what is the difference between seepage and outright leak? And I think what you have here is not normal seepage, but a tremendous uh tremendous leakage that uh should be fixed. I saw the proposal for seven hundred and some thousand dollars. That wasn't to fix the gunite. That was just to line the ditch with some kind of material that goes the length of the ditch is my understanding that it's not an actual gunite lining and it's not repairing. That's how I understood it. For them not to talk to us and to not communicate uh is just beyond bizarre. Uh, especially when you look at the shape that their asset is in and the damage that it's causing uh to the public, to our community, to our assets. It's just something that I don't think as a city council and the the we can sit here and just say, well, you know, I guess we do nothing or do or do we do something? And so I would be very supportive of moving forward with uh getting outside counsel and 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 getting this thing off center. And the unfortunate part to me was is that anybody who walks down there, you don't have to have an engineering degree. You don't have to be the the smartest tool in the shed. You can literally see that this is a problem. And for a company to say there is no problem is is just crazy. And there's you know, they should be community partners. They should be, they 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 should uh work with the city. I know the mayor was forthright in a in 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 offering up an interest free loan to help them get get this thing done and then they just stopped communicating. It's it is beyond bizarre and I hope that we can remedy this and I like all of you, thought it was very, very important for the entire council to see and hear what's going on with this and to uh ask your own questions and figure this out.
Thank you. Um, councillor Martinez. Yeah, thanks. Um, for those of us that don't have any experience with best more ditches or ditches and then out, what's fluming?
I think the I'm not sure. I'm the best person to ask, but my impression of fluming is is that if you, so little bit more history on this is that when they built the the Pueblo Dam and I think it was finished in seventy five or seventy six, uh, part of that, I think a ditch is a ditch. It's usually made with sand of a certain thickness and there may be other, it may have concrete underneath it. I'm not sure. But uh, because of the water quality was so improved out of the Pueblo reservoir that flowed through the ditch, the water quality actually didn't have enough sediment to keep uh the ditch uh operating. And this is real layman's and I could have it completely a hundred percent off.
You would bring anything bottom. I'd be like, yeah, sure.
Exactly. So uh, so it didn't have enough sediment i- in water that it used to be in the ditch uh after the construction of the dam because it was cleaner, it was coming directly out of the dam. And so it didn't have that sediment buildup that they could use for fluming and it increased problems. And I think this is what resulted in the lining. So the lining that we have in there is unique in the sense of the rest of the ditch doesn't have that. It's just in these affected areas that are closest to the reservoir. And so the fluming is what they've normally have is where they go through and they re-trench the ditch. Is what I I kind of understand it to be. I could be completely wrong on that.
So I so I understand that the RFP that was put out was gonna is result had resulted in eight hundred thousand dollars price tag, but that's only to reline it. And that's the extent of the improvement. Is that correct? Or is there additional improvements beyond just lining it? Because it looks like the from the pictures that there would be to be more substantive substantive work on it.
I, and I'm not an expert on this. Um, so the gunite was put in um back in nineteen eighty and again in eighty eight. It has a lifespan of like ten years maybe. Um, so that the proposal or the quote, I think it was for a liner to go down and just cover it. Uh, I mean, the the end all be all, what they want is to make it an enclosed pipe that goes through Pueblo, uh, which would probably be hundreds of millions of dollars and then and that's what they would really like, but.
Yeah. So uh, you know, we'd have to have city departments review to make sure this fits what the city needed. But what they had is uh uh they were going to do clean channel debris, tieback trench south and north installation of membrane, asphalt restoration. And so installation of membrane, including modify was uh the significant portion, which was approximately a hundred forty thousand, two hundred seventy five thousand. So as far as specifically what that means and what's that going to look like, I have no idea. We'd have to have somebody come in who's reviewed the uh the bid that's that they at least provided.
Okay. And then um, you know, Bob, I know that you're talking about outside counsel. Do we have a projected cost on that?
Yeah. So part of this couple of work is to review some initial issues, but also, you know, get us to, is there a duty? Which we think there is and they're going to come back with that. But if not, they can explain why and then you'll have your answer. Uh, what are what are available remedies? Do we have tort remedies? Is there a limitation period applicable? Uh, can we do mandamus? What can we actually do out of the litigation? And then with that, then they're going to provide a uh an approximation. We're going to request them to provide what's what would that cost? And so they can break that down for counsel as far as what the review is, what's available and what what the likely litigation's cost. Because obviously I think both sides don't want to litigate. I think it's a waste of people's money. But that's the wrap. The their position is it's our obligation and we have not gotten any uh proposals as far as funding this. And they've rejected our uh uh concept of, well, we'll we'll give you a ten year interest free loan, which is quite a significant uh, you know, if you calculate a ten year interest free loan at eight hundred thousand just using three to five.
How long ago was that offer on the table?
Yeah, I think there was early December is when we communicated, December ninth or something like that.
Okay. Um, and you know, so given that the the ditch has been in existence since eighteen eighty nine, I'm assuming that there's been some fixes throughout its existence. Do we have examples on that?
So it it gets, it it's actually, it gets hard to compare what what existed prior to, say nineteen seventy five, nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty and nineteen eighty eight when they did the lining. Because the lining is kind of a little different than what what they did in the past. But as far as fixes in the past, I have no idea.
Well, I mean, nineteen eighty is still several decades ago. It seems like there was, there's has to be some sort of, you know, example that we can look at since nineteen eighty to be like, you know, the best dish company um paid for this because it was, you know, under their purview that they need to pay for it.
I have no information that any repair works done on this lining that affects city owned property since the lining was installed in eighty eight.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And before we move down the line, I have a couple of questions of my own. How many uh feet is the entire ditch? The best for ditch? Because we're talking about just this area through City Park. How many, I mean, how many miles is the best summer ditch through our community?
And I can't give you a number. I could find out and get it to you, but it goes through the entire city of Pueblo out to the Mesa and further down. Um, the 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 issues were they were getting money to line was strictly through the city of Pueblo. Um, you know, once you get out to the the mill and out past there, I think Aspen, you know, then it's just a dirt ditch. I don't think it's lying the same way. But I'll get a number for you how long it is and.
Because what I'm wondering and I'm just, I'm thinking this from an average citizen's perspective. Are we just, is the local action just along the city owned property or is it for the entire ditch throughout the city?
The scope we were going to ask them review would be along city owned property. I mean, we're going to have our, you're going to limit mandamus, they may be able to tie in, but you're not going to have a tort claim for non city owned property. You don't own it. You have the damage.
Because if it's doing it there, it's if it's it's if it's doing it there, it's doing it through the entire ditch.
Yeah, but we're going to be the proper party to bring a tort claim for property we don't own.
Mm hmm. And they're a corporation, correct?
So they're not, right.
Should they have shareholders?
Yes.
And their maintenance fees, were you able to, are there books public? Are there are there books there?
That I don't know. I haven't researched anything like that. I don't know. I mean, we we're shareholders and I, it's it's an issue I haven't looked at.
We don't know what their net worth is, right?
Well, I think.
I mean, we'd have to look at it. I mean, if do they need to increase their fees to maintain their own ditch?
Yeah, it's something you'll have to.
Exactly. And you know, I mean.
I think they are struggling with that. I think that's that's probably a reluctance they have and and uh at least responding. I'm not sure why there's the lack of communication, but.
Because the ratepayers all have to pay for all the improvements and maintenance of all of our utilities that we use. And so it's not any different. Um, but uh, I would uh water laws, another tough is is tough. It's, you know, it's part of the water law, but there's got to be. Has there thought of there, is there any EPA violations? Um, because it seeps into the to the city and it's un it's un uh treated water. Um, and it gets into people's basements and and yards and it collects mosquitoes wherever there's flooding and so.
That I don't know, but we could certainly uh put that in as far as uh outside councils legal review, you know, I think they'll probably cover that to the extent what because they're going to take it and say, hey, this is okay, you you're giving them the facts. Here's here's, you want to get to A to B, here's probably your best, here's your available remedies and here's what we recommend. And so I think if there is, they will definitely find out.
Yeah, that I mean, that's just kind of like I said, from an average citizen watching this tonight, maybe this would be some of their questions on what what's this going to accomplish. I don't know that they'll be happy that we're only just taking care of the city instead of the entire ditch, but who knows? It might cover the entire ditch after you talk to the legal counsel.
They may have a diff, yeah, and they and the ditch company may have a different position with private, but I don't know.
Okay. Um, uh, councillor Gomez.
Yeah, when I was a little baby, I used to work at a snow pool company in Chicago, building pools in the middle of winter. And they were all drop in ground pools. I mean, it was gunite. And I'm not an expert and it's been a long time ago that I do remember this discussions on why would they would spray gunite and a combination of more sand than cement simply because of the shaping. Some of these pools are different levels and and it cracks less than hard concrete. So when they say about spraying, re-spraying, are we talking about taking a hose and spraying it with gunite? Or if you start from the basic pools and those structures which are probably less used than say the best mer ditch, rebar set in all that kind of stuff. I'm just curious, we should have records, maintenance records that shows when we were doing building pools, we had to make sure we were looking to come back every ten to fifteen years. There's going to be a leak someplace. We'd have to go fix the leak. So what do we have? And I don't know who the expert is, let's not be, but I'm just saying I have some familiarity with it. Those are the things we were worried about because we will see, I don't know if you've ever seen a pool being sprayed, giant hoses. Back in the day, we were taking barrel fulls of cement off a plank and dumping them into the hole. Well, now they have these big gunite, you'll see them on the back of these big cement trucks that spin. Okay. And I'm just saying, I know it's just, nothing's made to last forever, but I'd be surprised to know that somebody didn't have the foresight to say, when is this stuff going to break down? Everything breaks down. What have we learned in this community? Hiding and drinking, it's not the new chemicals and the epoxies. They probably have something out there now that's different when I when I was on the ground with it. But what do we have as far as records, maintenance, who are professionals? How could this thing be signed off on? And there's no plan to keep it maintained. I don't understand that one.
So we wouldn't have signed off on anything. It's their ditch. And so when they did the lining in eighty eight, at least as to our portions, we believe that was the portion that also has to be determined. That would have been completely their own project. We weren't involved in it, other than we contributed eleven percent. And I think the contribution was uh I don't, I'm not sure the intent for the reason for the contribution, but it wasn't our project. So in answer to your question, we wouldn't have any of those because it's not our ditch, not our project.
So when it goes to the people's homes and foundations and who knows responsibility for the for the taxpayer?
Not our ditch.
I understand, but their ditch, if there's water leaking out of it because it's going into my house, I think I have some, they have some capability, don't they?
And we're, as far as the city owned property that is adjacent to it, that's what we're looking to find out.
I understand it. What about neighborhoods? What about homes? So you're saying.
They're right, they're going to, they'll be running into the same issue we are.
I don't understand this at all. All right. Um, one more thing. If they have an issue with somebody's got a foundation problems because of water from that ditch, you're saying outside counsel. We don't have counsel competent enough to handle this stuff at your level?
Now, even if we were fully staffed, this is.
What's that?
Even if the slot of our was fully staffed, which it's not, this would be something out of the wheelhouse. Would you're going to get your best bang for the buck by getting somebody in who specializes in this area and could give you straight up quick foot up legal advices to the best remedy available. That's my, our recommendation.
How old is the best magician? Do we know?
Under eighteen eighty nine.
What's that?
Eighteen eighty nine.
Eighteen eighty nine. Okay. It's a little older than the poolside workup. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
And so on the team.
In my mind, it's related to what the conference was. And it stated. They're expected to must to take care of their business is what they're expected to do basically. It's like that. You know, it's the city will take care of it. The service lines will be the city will take care of it. And so, um, I've been talking about a golf course that still operates. I've been talking about a golf course that still operates. Information is being provided, whether anyone is working on any of the jumping or drifting. I think it's just like terms to take a flying move.
That's what we think. Were there any indications from any other communities that have done, have something similar like the Bessmer ditch that we could play off of, do you know?
I really wasn't able to find anything by going back to the, the water lawn. How old some of these water rights are, that's again why we need to, we need to bring somebody from the outside. And if you run, run me back to your congressional days, you know, even congressional offices would have to go outside. It's so complicated and high level when it comes to this.
Probably find the answer off from a giant cement company because they're huge in the United States. I bet you someone has a record somewhere. All right, just wanted to know.
Question. So we're covering, I mean, probably it's gonna have to be an investigative report. On what is happening around the um city owned property. I mean, they're gonna have to do testing and so forth if we move forward with some type of legal action. Um, as they build that case in this, and if the city prevails, it really kinda sets precedence for anyone down the line on either side of the, of the city owned properties. To already have that kind of casework established with that, is that fair enough to say?
Yeah, I don't know how much benefit uh other, like the private property owners will have if their judgment or to what extent they can, they can rely on it. But my focus is, is on city property. So, yeah, obviously, I think the, the ditch is gonna have that in mind and trying, if, if that's the direction we proceed. Uh, hopefully, uh, they get this resolved without that. Uh, I think one issue that does need to be resolved between the parties is uh that it's, you know, whose maintenance obligation? And obviously, the city's position is certainly not ours.
Okay, um, council Flores has another question.
I just have one quick statement. I don't know if this is true or not, but now that we know uh the city has evidence uh that, uh, our citizens are being harmed, uh, their property is being flooded. Uh, we know that uh our property is being damaged. Uh, I think the proper statement to make here is that we have an obligation to move forward on this. For the benefit of uh people that we represent and the assets that are owned by the community. Uh, so I, I just, there's not a question there, but I, I, I don't know whether or not you agree or not.
What direction? Uh, that's a policy call. Uh, obviously, wouldn't be bringing to you if, if. I think one of the, the biggest troublesome issue is just the legal duty should be, should be resolved, period. What remedies we have, I think uh we'll, we'll find out and come back to, let you know what the costs are, see what direction you wanna go on that.
Okay, is that everyone? All right, we'll go to the next um topic tonight, and that is. Ideas to generate revenue for the city, and that is with our mayor. And Valerie Palumbo.
You're gonna do the. Okay, yes, you are. Good evening, President Davis. I've been asked to come forward this evening to present information on Colorado home municipalities. What their tax rates are, to look at their different type of taxes, a monthly tax, to see where Pueblo lies within all of the home cities, and maybe this will spark an idea, additional revenue for the city. So, let's get started. My favorite topic, tax. So, the forefront of our thinking at all times is the reason why we want to increase revenue. We know this community needs infrastructure, safety, recreational features. Portable housing, we want to be able to help our nonprofits as well, that they do such great work with the community. All this um equates to revenue, additional revenue. But this is always in the forefront of our thought process. Strategies to increase revenue and enhance services through tax. Uh, these are some of the requirements. We can increase tax rates. We can reduce tax breaks, we can expand our tax base, improve enforcement, letting taxes or indoor letting fees. Um, and we can also work to attract new businesses to Pueblo with tax incentives. So let's understand our tax rate. Three percent is for the general fund, which represents sixty point eight percent of our revenue. So it's one of the largest revenue streams we have. And the others are point five for the Petco, point two for safety. And then we have one percent counting, two point nine percent state of Colorado. All combined, we have a total of seven point six percent is our tax rate. I have a note on the slide that talks about sales tax. It's relatively volatile. It's up and downs. We have experience through our budget discussions and you see through the sales tax reports. And it is our largest revenue stream that has the most volatility. In the next slide, I have given you all of our sixty six home cities. Um, the first column is gonna be their city tax rate that they bring home to their general fund. The second column is their total tax rate, rate, excuse me, that's in red. So out of the sixty six home cities, the average local rate base is three point seven four. We're three point zero. So there's a difference of the point seven four. For the total rate is eight point two two and now it's seven point six. So there's a point six difference. Seventy three percent have a higher base for local tax rate than Pueblo. Seventy seven percent have a higher total tax rate than Pueblo. So we're gonna look at their portfolios. Um, this is only talking to their city tax rate and their full tax rate. Okay, so in red, you can see that there's a lot, a lot more municipalities have a higher rate than we do. The next green is, I'm giving you an impact if we increase our sales tax rate. On the left hand side, it's for the city. What kind of revenue would we incur? Or additional revenue, revenue, which will increase to the point fifteen, point twenty, et cetera. That would be the additional revenue we would see based on twenty twenty three gross sales. On the right side, I always like to give a consumer a picture of what they would pay us. Based on an increase in tax for two hundred dollars worth of purchased goods, what would they pay in addition? So if anyone from thirty cents to a dollar. We can model this with our tax base, uh, different percentages, but this is to give you a, a rough idea of what we could get in additional revenue if we increase our tax rate.
Go ahead. Is that okay, Val? Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So for the, um, for the left hand chart, the point, you know, fifteen, twenty, twenty, that, that, that's in addition to our current rate at seven point six percent, correct?
It's, it's in addition to our current rate of three percent.
Oh, for sales use tax.
Correct. So we would go three point fifteen, and this is the additional revenue that we will get, and this is based on twenty twenty three gross sales. So, you know, it's a projection, but it's pretty much there. Now, the next slide I've given you the, uh, an article about the backbone of budgets. We know that local municipalities run the tax dollars. This is what we run them. So, um, a lot of the municipalities and states are increasing taxes or they're going to fees. This particular article talks about the uh Colorado, state of Colorado retail delivery fee that we all pay. I think it's twenty nine cents or twenty six cents. It's a fee. And it's actually uh funding six different needs for the state community to clean transit, bridge and tunnel infrastructure. Just on a simple fee. This also talks about the second paragraph about sales taxes frequently won as a ballot item. Meanwhile, this talks about Texas. We need to raise taxes for their parks and their conservation center and airport improvements. The third paragraph talks about the popular sales tax exemption for groceries. Um, there's gonna be a mixed bag of goods. You're gonna see, there are some states who repeal, some states tax. Local jurisdictions are taxing groceries. I'm gonna show you a chart on that. Just remember that when we talk about sales taxes volatile, right? We're always in the up and down. So what we need to do is find that medium to temper that, and that's what we talk about when we have a mixed bag of goods and we have a different profile of taxes. So in this next article, it talks about the volatility. The main uh paragraphs I like here are changes to design. You wanna have mixed bank of taxes so that you can temper your volatile taxes. So you go back, get back to the discussion of wants and needs. Needs, tax rate is gonna temper the wants, right? It's gonna bring us down a little bit for the ups and downs of the volatile tax. So as you're gonna see in the next slides, um, you're gonna see how other cities are doing it as well, because they have a little bit of a mixture we do as well with the point two percent and the point five percent. In the next uh slide, you're gonna see the home rule cities. And on the left hand, right hand side, I gave you a legend of what they're taxing. So they're taxing RTD, mass transit, scientific, cultural, et cetera, many areas of taxation to um support their community and make sure that these needs are met. So they've got additional tax rates out there, non-revenue based, but additional. We do two with the point five and point two. But this is where it comes into, and the next green is the home rule cities as well. This just talks a lot about the home cities, and we always talk about they have healthy budgets up north. It's because of their taxing and how they tax. They're using a little bit differently. We have to also keep in mind that a stagnant tax rate will not support us forever. We've got to be looking at it, just like a, a, a private, our taxpayer family, costs go up, they go up for the city as well. In order to uh incur those costs and keep our community supported at a standard that is acceptable. We have to look at your tax rate. So the next slide is tax on food for home consumption. The Tax Foundation has an article here, uh, based on a rule the states repeal their, their uh tax on groceries. And it goes on, they were trying to target the lower income families to help them out. And it was poorly calibrated, because when we tax groceries, any low income family that is on federal programs, uh, they're not taxed. They're never taxed. So, um, they looked at the Tax Foundation, took a look at this and said, they shouldn't have done that. I mean, it was a serious tax cut for them. And it didn't, it didn't help them any. Now, the next slide is home rule cities, everybody in red taxes groceries. So we've got seventy seven percent of our home cities who tax food for home consumption. And associated rates are there. The average rate is three point five one percent that they're taxing food. This tax on food is tempering the thousand lose tax that has its ebbs and flows, ups and downs. This is a constant that helps them, and that's what keeps their budgets so healthy. So these are taxes on groceries at the grocery store. So the next slide, I've done it again, and given you on the left hand side is potential revenue that we can pull. For taxing groceries, we took all of the grocery exemptions for twenty twenty three. And we taxed it, and I took this at a half percent, one, one and a half, et cetera. How much additional revenue the city will bring in? On the right hand side, I've done it for the consumer as well. If they purchase two hundred dollars worth of groceries, what are they gonna pay in addition if we tax it? Again, red, we're gonna talk about revenue coming from these around programs that are taxed, they're exempt from tax. Put together both an increase in our tax rate, our base tax rate in groceries. So you can see, and you can, you know, do this combination in which way you like, but you could see from the point fifteen to raise our base and a half percent for the food, we're bringing a total of five point four six five million a year. All the way up to twenty five million a year. So these are revenue generating ideas. So now I'm gonna talk a little bit about SUTS, sales and lose tax systems. I attended many meetings at the Capitol for the uh Tax Simplification Committee that brought together all of our marketplace facilitators, the Amazons, the Facebooks, the Ebays, and said, we want to tax. So they said, give us a system where we can go to one place to remit tax and try to come to some consistency through your home cities of exemptions and what's taxable and what's not. So in twenty twenty, after a system was built. Um, I got us logged onto SUTS, and as you can see in this graph, from twenty twenty to twenty six thousand to twenty twenty three, three point almost five million. We have brought in additional revenues from those marketplace facilitators. So we have increased revenue through SUTS. I didn't take this to twenty twenty four because our licensees are now starting to use this portal, so it'd be a mixed bag of goods. But I can tell you that the three point four million is ninety five percent all new revenue. And it's still growing, um, but I'm gonna be sure that you understand that we have had growth in our revenue. We will continue to. To what extent, I don't know, because that was all new. And we're gonna have to find our baseline there. Now, that's words by the sales tax division. This is where we have our different ideas on how to generate revenue. Prepaid tax on city projects. Um, I brought this to the Tension Administration when we did the Dylan flyover. All the cities prepay tax on reconstruction. The reason why is to keep it in our coffers. So we give them a certificate, they go to their suppliers, and we can't charge them tax in the springs or any city up north, because they've already given it to Pueblo. So we continue to do this. Um, we have ordained said a million dollars in labor, it's mandatory prepaid. Um, I've asked to work with the grandma money so we can get even further revenue from our construction projects. So that's been very good to the city of Pueblo. Voluntary disclosure agreements. Uh, this is, this is taken off since I've gotten to sunsets. These are for the um retailers who collected our tax, they never remitted it to us. So they'll come to us and say, sorry, we never remitted, you know, we'll give them a voluntary disclosure agreement. Um, charge an interest, not penalty, and we'll collect tax. So between twenty twenty and twenty twenty four, I've collected six hundred and seventy eight K in taxes. And it's still flowing because of, we have so many businesses in many states and all, actually all over the world that have come to us. Pursuing the e-commerce businesses, I'm actively pursuing these bigger entities to get them to collect and file taxes with us. You can imagine how many cities they are filing for. So Pueblo's not a very big one on their map. Until I get a hold of them and we work out something to get them online and get some money in. So I pursue them quite frequently. Audit revenue. This really wasn't audit revenue. It was in sales tax. I'll tell you that I had a ten minute meeting with a taxpayer and recognized they were doing it wrong. And that resulted in a three point nine million, which you saw an uptick August to October of this year. So, in our office, uh, interactions with our taxpayers and the education is fruitful for us. The audit revenue for my monitors who are great in twenty twenty three, six hundred and eighty K. Excuse me, the twenty twenty four, one point three seven nine million. Excuse me, the twenty twenty four, one point three seven nine million. So when we go out and we audit folks, we do it for education and make sure, ensure they're doing it correctly. And that's our focus for our audits is catchy, do something, but we also do the education. So then after we audit and we educated them, we have additional revenues coming in because we've educated them and now they're going to start doing it right. So it's a really good process and it's critical to the city to ensure compliance. When we're ongoing compliance separates, we have compliance technicians who route and sometimes unfortunately write tickets, but we've got to bring to the taxpayers' attention that if they collect sales tax, that's the property of the city of Pueblo. It needs to be remitted time into the city. And we have a problem with a lot of businesses who sometimes don't. So we've got to go out and make sure that they do remit the taxes properly. So this brings us all around to the impact. And this is all for our community, right? We need more revenue so that we can do all the great things for our community. But that is going to take some investment by citizens and government. But this will give you an idea of where we run with the pack on tax rates. And I think we have some room to grow on the tax rates. This is the end of my information for you. If you have questions, um, any questions from council? Yes, Council Gomez.
Well, I'm real concerned because I'm not sure if you guys are taking the account the other costs on the other side of what you were talking about and running some taxes and driving more taxes. I mean, how do you explain us constantly having to go back to our constituent basis saying, you know what? Dig deeper into your pocket. We know you're food close a bit stupid. We know you're food close. You've been gouged. We, we got all that and and you're trying to have to choose between warming your house and eating food. And like, I understand what you're saying. But putting this on the back, they have no more money left. I don't know what smart games of people's hits. These folks are broke in a lot of these areas in Pueblo. Not just investment, not these all over. They're calling saying, look, stop, we can't do this anymore. And to come out with this and saying, well, they're not paying enough, let's get deeper into their pockets. I think it's just so off the mark. It just alarms me. It's not the answer. Let's get rid of the race for abuse already. Let's start looking at that stuff and things that we're wasting money on and turn that around and help the constituent. Everybody here has got constituents they're responsible to. I can't keep on going back and saying, you know what? We pay forty eight percent more in reference to some of the things that other front range cities are paying. So what? Give me more money. I don't know if you realize what we're, we're putting up with here. So I don't agree. I, I see what you're saying. It's not your fault. It's not this mayor's fault. It's not this diocese's fault. This stuff has been put in place, legislation for this nonsense to carry on for as long as it has is enough. I'm not going back to my constituents. I'm not supporting any rates increases on taxes at all. And so not against you. I'm just saying, that's how I feel.
And I understand your position. I did understand that we're going to present information to you and that decision is at your level.
Okay, thank you.
Well, before I move that way, I have a couple of questions myself. Um, so we're looking at a half a percent generating almost four million dollars. But yet we are eight and a half million dollars in deficit as we operate now for twenty twenty five. So really, if we keep operating at that, it's going to increase, right? Because we have raises again. Do we have raises again next year? Because I'm looking at how the personnel costs went from um, seventy eight million in twenty twenty four to ninety four million in twenty twenty five. That's sixteen million there. How much more increases are we going to have for twenty twenty six? Um, in as far as personnel costs, just based off of raises? Because, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That we have to look at and negotiate through the collective bargaining units. Um, so I can tell you that this administration, I think, does not have the appetite for the huge increases that we've seen in prior years. I think now we're dealing with that fallout and this administration is committed to reducing expenses where we can. Uh, there's some where we just don't have that choice. Um, so what we wanted to present with our presentation tonight is that in addition to decreasing expenses, we also have pathways to increase revenues. Now, what we're talking about here would have to be a vote of the people. Um, so we can discuss and debate these ideas, but ultimately it comes down to all of our constituents.
That's right. It comes to a vote of the people and the average citizen that can do the math on the budget and see just those, just the numbers I've given you right now. I mean, really eleven, twelve million is going to just basically cover the deficit that we've been operating under since I've been on council. It's been at least, you know, almost ten million each year. And um, this is only twelve million here. We don't have the capital improvements in this twenty twenty five budget that we would like to. I think that it is a responsibility to let the people know exactly what budget cuts we're going to make coming up because we didn't make enough this year to bring down that deficit. And this increase in charging them sales tax is only going to cover that deficit so that we don't have to possibly take from the um, the fund balance for future budgets. So just, I'm just saying that, you know, look at the perspective of people and how they're seeing that. We can't, we have to show our responsibility here in the diocese and as well as from the administration that we have to make serious cuts in order for that twelve million dollars that they're going to pay make a difference. Otherwise, it's not going to make a difference if we keep operating the way that we do.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. Um, Council Martinez.
Yeah, thanks Danny and Val for that presentation. I, I know that it was a lot of work and it was a lot of homework and Val, you're a numbers lady and I, I appreciate you walking us through this. So I have several questions. Um, the first one on the tax code slide, I really liked, I really liked the visual and just the, I guess, the education around all of, that you have to diversify your portfolio in terms of taxes. Um, I thought that that was really well put, Val. What's a health services district?
You know, I don't know the particulars in each of their, what they're taxing. Um, I couldn't tell you. I couldn't find out for you. But I know when they have a specific district and they have a specific mood, then they find to vote of the people to get that. Much like we have done with our, our safety tax and our Petco.
Okay, if you could, that would be great. Okay. Um, for the uh, food, the base tax and food for home consumption tax, when we're looking at all of the different communities in Colorado that have passed it. So it, right, if, if I, if I added everything up correctly, can we go to that slide?
Is it combining both or just on the food?
Uh, it's the food tax rate. Uh, one more. Yeah. Here. Okay. So if I'm, if I'm just adding everything right, there are sixty eight communities that's on this chart that are all, you know, that, that are uh, home rule. Seventeen out of those sixty eight communities don't have um, a food, a food for home consumption tax, which is pretty low and, and we're one of them. And I, you know, to counter Gomez's point, which I hear that, you know, our constituents' pockets are, are close. And looking at the other communities that have a similar demographic to Pueblo. So I'm looking at Greeley, I, you know, we typically are compared to Greeley, Durango, Lamar. They all have pretty substantial food, uh, food for home consumption taxes. Durango's is three and a half. Greeley's is three point four six. Lamar's is three. So um, I like to see that because those are the other communities who, you know, have very similar demographics to our community to show that, um, you know, it's, it's, we're not, we're not trying to Denver, Pueblo. We're, we're just trying to increase our revenue. Um, so I thought that was a pretty well taken.
And think about the jurisdictions like geographically where we are. You know, when you talk about up north, you've got Littleton, Sheridan, Eaglewood, they're all fighting one up against each other, right? They have a larger population. And when you have somebody like the Durango and us, we don't. We, geographically, we don't have that coming in. So we, we rely on this community and people coming off I twenty five to uh, make purchases to increase our, so it's, it's a little bit more difficult for us.
And so on this slide, it says that the average consumption tax rate is three point five one percent. So on that next slide, it gives you, you know, it'll give us thirteen million projected revenue and the seven dollars on a two hundred dollar bill. I'm curious if staff has a recommendation on the percent for the tax.
I think we would recommend if we did um, implement a sales tax on food, that we do it gradually.
Okay.
Starting off at a lower rate that gradually uh, increases
Over time.
Potentially.
Like a five year span, graduate, you know, we graduate up.
Mm-hmm. Do you have a starting base rate in mind?
I think that's where we also wanted to um, get feedback from council also and see what thoughts were, if we should pursue those avenues, um, dig in deeper or not. Um.
Right, we would defer to administration and council for that, but we can start on either our tax, uh, our local tax base and/or the food for home consumption and start at a low level and graduate up over, let's say, five years. And let's say in one of the years, we don't have to, we're healthy, we don't have to go there, then we don't go there.
And so let's play that scenario out, Val. Would that have to go, this is a question for Mr. Gifford. Would that then have to go through a vote of the, of the people to stop it? Or could council have that jurisdiction because the voters approved up to X percent?
My other question again?
Um, if we were to incrementally increase the tax over five years, but then at year three, we said, okay, that's enough. Would that have to go back to the vote of the people?
We only need to have voted the people to raise tax in favor to authorize, say, up to five percent within the next five years. And at year three, at three percent, you decide to stop. That's more well, that's within your prerogative as city council. You could also go up to five and then lower it back to one. You can lower taxes without having to go to a vote.
Okay. So it, there was a lot of information that you presented about around the food, the food home consumption tax. Um, help me, help me understand why we should do that instead of increasing another tax like our sale, like our general sales use tax.
Well, your, your, your grocery tax is a need and it's going to be a little bit more stable than your sales and use tax, which is going to have your flow. It's going to be more volatile. So when we have volatility in the sales and use, our grocery tax kind of lumps it a little bit, tempers it down. So I would say that the grocery tax is a little bit more reliable than the sales and use tax.
And the grocery, uh, so this, the slide that we are currently on, this, these numbers are just off of groceries from our sales use tax. Is that correct?
The numbers that we came up with are grocery deductions on tax returns that are filed with the city. So we took all the groceries for twenty twenty three that everybody deducted, added them, and that's what we're getting taxed on.
Okay. And when you're talking about groceries, you're not talking about if you're going into a, if you're going to a restaurant and you're eating at that restaurant. Um, that's not an additional tax. It's only if you're going to King Supers, Wolf and Jett.
Correct. Only if you're going to shop for the food for home consumption. King Supers, your Albert Seans and so on.
Okay. Um, oh, what, so the, the cities that we also just talked about on the other, on the previous slide from this one that all passed the food for home consumption tax, um, what is the one that did it the most recent?
Hmm. It's a good question. I've read a few articles. I know that I can't remember the city off the top of my head. I don't want to get it wrong, but they were taxing it and repealed it and now their budgets are in bad shape. So they're going to try to get it back. We can get some information on there for the home rule cities who the latest ones are. Can you please help? I, I do, you know, I think what we have is a history. I think I believe I have a history document of all the home rule cities and their tax. So we'll look for that for everybody.
That'd be great. That's all, you know, and I guess I, you know, it's, it's clear from our budget that we need to increase revenue somehow. But I mean, we have to, um, we have to be able to do all of the great things that we do in the city. Um, have, you know, be able to pay all of the um, personnel, pave our roads, um, you know, keep our, our people uh, safe and healthy. So we need to increase revenue. Um, we need to do it somehow. I like the idea of um, pursuing some kind of tax increase. Um, so I'm, I would, I would be in favor of moving forward with this and getting more information. Um, does the administration have a timeline on, on this?
This would have to be put to the ballot. So we'd need to have ballot language in August. So we have some time. Um, I know that we had just talked about though, the, the dire need that our budget is and that council requested that I come to you with some solutions on different revenue streams, what that would look like, if these monies can be earmarked to, to certain projects. In Greeley, excuse me, they earmark their food tax to capital projects. So that essentially it can't be spent on personnel. It has to be infrastructure and capital projects. Um, and those capital projects are set every single year and they are to complete um, the projects that the, that the voters wish for it to be completed within that year. They also have a program um, in Greeley that if you are low income, that you can apply to this program and you can get food stipends uh, from the city through this program that they have. So there's, there's some creative ways that they've been able to bring different revenue generations. Um, over the next couple of days, I'm going to be sending you the sales tax report and it is down significantly. Um, again, for uh, November. So I think sales tax continues um, to fall. People aren't spending money. Uh, we know people are grocery shopping regardless and we feel that this would be, you know, the best way to bring additional revenue um, into the city. I understand, Council Gomez, that people are um, strapped. Uh, we see it at the city with the sales tax dollars. Um, some of you are business owners. I'm sure you see it there. But essentially, sales tax hasn't increased in a very long time in the city and that we have been operating um, million dollar budgets on three percent of every dollar that's spent. And with inflation and the high costs, um, salaries, raises for our employees, more capital projects than we've ever done before. You know, we have to look for other sources of revenue generation. And unfortunately, the city runs on fees and taxes. That's how we provide services to our community. Um, you know, even though we have uh, fantastic opportunities and grants, um, that money can only be earmarked and spent on certain things. So I think that this has been a long time coming. Um, I think the other communities are up and down the front range. You see them being able to provide different services, um, have big infrastructure projects in their community. And they do that because they have the dollars enabled, you know, enabled to be able to do that. So I think that this is something that we have to look at. I, you know, in order to balance a, a, a nine million dollar deficit um, and still be able to provide services and infrastructure to the community, we're not going to be able to do that on three percent without significant layoffs and even with significant layoffs. Um, if we are not collecting sales tax like we have in previous years, we're going to have a really hard time trying to provide services to the community, just basic essential services um, and basic infrastructure needs. And I think that we have to take a hard look at what our revenue sources are going to be for twenty twenty six.
And for those reasons, I, that's exactly why I think I, I would feel very comfortable and it's almost a necessity at this point to move forward. Um, so I'd, I'd like to move forward with this.
And so Martinez, are there any more questioning health services districts? Uh, was your question regards to what those are?
Yeah.
So what they are, what they are is they're Title Thirty Two special districts, much like a metropolitan district or a fire service protection district. Um, one example is Um, one example is in Leveaux, St. Vincent Hospital. It's a hospital that's actually funded through sales tax in addition to their cost and fees. So I don't, I don't believe we have one here in Pueblo County, or at least not in the city, but that's what they are.
Hi, Councilor Flores.
We had the food tax um on the books and convenience and all these numbers you gave us. First of all, thank you for this. This is this is information um that gives me a lot of hope that we're looking at every possible situation. What you've done here is given us lots of options. You're not, you're not particularly focused on any one. But I really appreciate the the value that you bring by bringing all of this. Had we had the food tax in place, what kind of revenue would we have seen uh this past year?
For twenty twenty four, we did not pull those because we didn't see the revenue. But twenty twenty three, we would have uh the, well, the revenue that you see by the different uh tax increases would have been the revenue we would have had. The groceries.
It is.
Are we talking about groceries?
Yes, groceries.
So the grocery deductions for twenty twenty three, we would have had that additional revenue by.
Do you know what that number was in twenty twenty three?
Uh, well, here, let me tell you on this slide. Right here. Okay. So the total grocery deductions in twenty twenty three was a three seventy three, four hundred and seventy one, three hundred and fifty. That's total grocery deductions. And if we taxed it the half percent to the three point seven, this chart will tell you how much money we would have had taken in. That's the revenue we would have received. Because that's based on real deductions.
Okay.
So anywhere from the one point eight to the thirteen point eight, we would have.
Depending.
If it was taxed at any one of those rates.
So it's a big dollar amount.
It is a big dollar.
You know, we talked about um the needs that we have in the community. These very same people um that were, you know, were not wanting to burden, they're the ones that are normally need uh more police protection. They uh, it's funny, we're talking about the Bessemer ditch. I I fell into a pothole right on Thatcher between the two golf courses. There's a hole down there. I don't know how big it was. And so the poor people also have to get their car aligned and get tires on there. You know, so there's a lot of things that you have to balance when you do something like this. It's just not the tax itself, but the promise that we make as a city to our citizens that we're going to provide them with safety and we're going to provide them with with good roads and that we're going to provide them with fire protection and all of these things. And it's in lonely falls, it's a lot more catastrophe for someone that is poor uh when uh we don't uh have the resources to fix the infrastructure. So I think this information is really valuable and uh really appreciate you going to this extent. Um, so um the the one thing that we don't talk about because it's, I don't think it's something within your purview. And that is the money that I really think we should be going after is tourism. Is is anytime a tourist stops in Pueblo, Colorado, whether to to rent a hotel room or whatever. But that's money that is normally not within our control. It just comes in and uh it it provides us with a uh uh the ability, you know, to do that. I I, you know, I've been harping on this for a long time. That's where I think we have the greatest opportunity is getting people off of I twenty five and Highway fifty to come spend their money here. And uh for whatever reason, uh this past budget cycle, we cut the very people that are trying to do that um through the cut, the cuts that we made on uh the chambers, on the, on the zoo, on the art center. Those are the very organizations that when they bring in a dollar, it really means about three fifty to us as a city because those people are spending money in our restaurants and our hotels. Uh, they go out, they buy retail goods and stuff like that. And that's, but that's a marketing piece that needs to be dealt with separately. But I I mentioned that because I think that's another source of income that we always forget about. But thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This is really valuable information.
Our Sam's here. We have a lot of people from the south that come up and shop. It's not only the Pueblo community who's going to be buying groceries here. We have a lot of southern um municipalities or cities that come up and shop too. The bigger stores that we get, they're going to come up and they're going to shop.
That was, I I did remember another question that had to do with our, when I first got on city council, there was a uh uh, there was a, you have, in fact, you have it on your presentation, there there was a a law that was passed, that Wayfair law, which basically meant if you bought something online, you still had to pay taxes to the community you bought it from. And I, but I still think there's leakage there. And I'm wondering if you have any idea about how much we lose because of internet sales and the uh and not having a tighter grip on that.
Well, we had, that's a vast world for e-commerce and um they're trying to, well, the bigger ones, you know, we've got the Amazon and and the bigger e-commerce and marketplaces. But there, and we do have a small business uh threshold too in Colorado. I believe it's your sales and a hundred thousand dollars and under, you don't have to. We call it economic nexus, meaning that you make a sale to our jurisdiction, you're to collect tax and we need it. And that's what turned everything around. That's what SUTS brought to us, right? So there are still a lot of retailers out there that are still, we get flooded with, I don't know, ten, twelve uh license applications uh a month with retailers all over. You know, as far around the world who are selling to us that we get licensed. They're just getting around to Pueblo. They're hitting the bigger cities because it's just a lot more for the Denver's and, you know, up north. But we try to get Pueblo on the map as I'm reaching out to. I learn about them, they learn about us. And I'm hoping when they start collecting our tax and remitting it. So.
President Neilus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the information. It is good information. I mean, it's it's stuff that uh all cities I'm sure have to consider. You know, I guess I just look at it through a different lens of I understand how uh there are shortfalls, we need money, how are we going to get money? Let's raise taxes because we can put another thirteen million dollars in the bank. We can put another fifteen million dollars in the bank just by the simple act of raising taxes, which obviously city council can't do, but the voters can do. The economic well being of the community can be directly uh tied to their development. Their residential development, their commercial development, uh which in turn brings in jobs, which in turn crows the economy, increases the tax base, and all of a sudden we have enough money to do the things that we need to do on infrastructure. So do we have this, this, this dire need to raise taxes or do we have this dire need to finally tear down all the barriers that are standing in the way of this community moving forward to positive growth and and uh getting out of this funk that we've been in for sixty or seventy years of not growing. It literally, you know, I I did really sound like a broken record, but the only thing that's grown in Pueblo is the government. It's the only thing that's grown. The economy has just stayed flat forever and ever and ever. And in order to feed that government that keeps growing and growing and growing, it has this insatiable appetite for these dollars that need to be created. But we bypass the literal things that we can put in place to create dollars other than taxes. Uh, every community up and down the front range that is doing good, you can directly tie their growth into their economic development and their economic growth. They have development. They have jobs coming to town. The reason they have jobs is because they did the development. One follows the other. Uh. It's just my opinion that that's how you fix the problem. You fix the problem by uh crashing the barriers that are keeping, why are people not building here? Why are a lot more companies coming in? Why is our economic development uh uh on the city stuck? What do we need to do to make those things turn around so we can start creating the the dollars that we need rather than uh raising taxes? Absolutely. There are some difficult decisions that have to be made, but the easy decisions are let's become a community that's pro-growth, that is, is uh takes takes down all of the reasons why developers can't come in here and build, why businesses have a hard time getting uh getting their uh stores built, so on and so forth. Uh, get everybody on the same page of doing that and you turn around the community where they're growing. And all of a sudden, you're not having these conversations about where are we going to find the revenue to to fund the city because the revenue is coming in. Uh, and I think that should be our first line of defense before we ever look at raising taxes. Let's fix the problems that uh are glaring and turn this community around. We haven't been, I've been crying for that for five years and it gets nowhere. Nowhere. Uh. Every week, every week or every month, there's an email or a phone call or a or or meeting that we have to have where a developer is stuck, where there's uh uh DDOTs doing something, Public Works is doing something, uh Regional District is doing, it's everybody. It's not just one entity. It's everybody. And not working together to put this machine in motion to make Pueblo an economic powerhouse. And we have these conversations about sales tax and 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 raising taxes. And it's just, it's just crazy. If we're not going to grow our economy, then we need to shrink our government. We will need to grow our government even bigger. If the economy is not growing, why are you even talking about adding thirteen million dollars to our budget or twenty eight million dollars to our budget? What is the purpose of that? We need to reduce the amount of money that we're spending because we're just stuck in a rut and not growing. Uh, I find it surprising and I, and I'm not throwing stones, but I find it surprising that the finance department would would look at those numbers and not say we have a problem with our economy is flat, but our government keeps growing. What's the answer to that? Well, I get it. The answer is raise taxes. But the real answer would be, we need to reduce the size of our government to fix the amount of money, to match the amount of money that we we bring in. That's the problem. It's just out of whack. Or we knock down these barriers, we become a community that is pro-growth and into residential, commercial development, and we start making taxes and we, we, we start uh uh creating the growth that translates into dollars that takes care of the problem right away. That's how I look at it. I would never support raising taxes when we're not even trying to fix the other problems. That's what I, where I would be stuck.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilor um Gomez.
Again, make sure you understand that. Look, I'm not upset with you guys. I'm not. The information is is tough information to bring forward. Okay, to the styus. We've got to keep things in in context here. This is pretty much the new dius, new mayor. They're trying, they're trying to tackle these programs, these problems, and they're big. They're huge. I want, well, when people get on the internet and they look at Pueblo, and I I do all the time. Whole city in the United States, no violent crime, more crime property, one property, whatever, one entity of it. Now, I'm a businessman. The first thing I do is research public Colorado and I look at, how's the schools? How's the crime? How's the poverty? How's the deduction rate? It's frightening for us, but I'm just saying, I don't, I don't know if anybody has a concrete answer, but there are places that are solving some of these problems. They really are. And there's programs and there's people that have done program development and got them done. Um, if you look at the big three, crime, poverty, and homelessness, like I said, there's ways to fix that. But do we have it ourselves collectively to trust each other? And really look at these programs saying, I don't need the credit. I'll step back. You can have it all. You'd be surprised how far you can get things done. If you're, if you're willing just to do that, stop. Let's look what's best for the community. Let's stop thinking about what the future holds. As you get older, like some of us on the styus, I have a different look at it now. When I was a younger person, thirty, forty years old, and I had a big path in front of me, I got it. I I can climb that ladder. I can get more influence. I can make more money. When you get a little bit older, you're kind of on straight and narrow. Okay, when people say anybody who is using this for stepping stones, our stepping stones are limited. I don't have that in my list. So I want to do the best I can. And I don't blame any younger politicians. I think I understand it. But we've got to start recognizing being honest. Pueblo has a huge problem. Okay, and if we don't recognize that, we can't fix it. We don't have a media. What media do we have? It's like, like I said, the island of Dr. Marlowe. You know, what do we have here? We have the Denver Post here? No. We have the Gazette? No. We have the public chiefing it up in the legislature in Denver? No. Everything stays right here in this little island. And that's the problem. But there's good people here. And I, you know, we have, I don't always be with the mayor, I don't always be with Sarah, I don't always be with Dennis. But we're trying our best. There's nobody here that I think that's intentionally trying to hurt the community. I really don't believe that. It's just I think we're going in different directions and it's hard to sit down and say, you know, how do we figure this out together? Um, that's the end of my speech, sorry.
We're happy to bring this information forward because you need to be educated and we need to have these kind of conversations so that with the information, then you can make your decisions. So we take no offense to any of the conversation. I see a different perspective when I'm looking at the tax uh that coming. Um, you know, tax for me is not a negative term. It's a positive term. It's called an investment in the community. And as a private citizen, I would gladly pay more tax if we can turn this community around. So um for me, uh, I just want to be sure to provide you with all the information so that you can make a decision. Um, ultimately, it it lies with our community, right? If we take it to vote with the people. So um, we try to do the best we can for this city. In the sales tax division, we work eight to five, very difficult hours, very difficult times we have with taxpayers, but we try our very best. So I'm, I'm glad you're accepting of the information. Um, this is something we need to talk about. And moreover, but as far as for me, if I was a private citizen, I'd invest in my community.
That's why we sit down and we have these discussions, you know, so the community can um make their decisions and so forth. You know, I was seeing it as the sales tax uh revenue increase um just on the sales tax, you know, just barely covering the deficit that we've been operating under uh for the past few years. And then now we have to bring out this uh food for home consumption tax when uh that's all you hear from people across the nation about the cost of um increase of food and I don't know. We are a poverty stricken community, but not everybody who is living under, you know, in, you know, lesser income is eligible for food stamps. So the food stamp thing as a protected class in all of this isn't, you know, we have a large part of our community. I mean, their last employer brought in jobs at forty one thousand a year. That's not that you can't support a family on that. You know, it's hard to just even support, you know, two people, much less two people and two children. Um, and so to say, you know, and to say well, they need the food, so that's what we're going after. I mean, that doesn't even sound ethical. You know, I mean, it's just like we're gonna, they need the food, so we're gonna target you there. But I mean, we've got to come up with some a better way to sell it if we're going to sell it to the people. That's all I'm saying.
I think to uh build incentives for businesses to come as well. I agree with you, President Neilus. That we need more businesses to broaden our tax base and have more people coming. Um, that's another area that, you know, we can talk about, look at, and try to get more businesses coming, employers, keep them in here for jobs and increase tax revenue. It's a very good point. I agree with you.
All right then. Well, thank you for your time and uh we're good. I don't, okay. With that being said, I think we're done for this evening. Any, any comments from the mayor or um, councillor or Janice?
So I guess I didn't, I, you know, it sounds like about that I, I, where do we go from, from here with this is my question.
Well, we have to August to, to figure it out. I mean, to get the ballot language written. So I'm sure that you know, she has suggested that councillor, uh, and that President Aleph has made some good suggestions. And we're talking about generating revenue and maybe we need to see a presentation on, on development changes and so forth that could increase revenue, not just taxes, but some changes of when it comes to development. And if that's reducing fees, um, what we're encouraging, what is our, what's the city's um, part in all of, uh, development coming to town. So I guess there's quite a few things that we need to hear about, um, before we make final decisions on what we're going to send to the ballot.
Right. This is really to promote conversations. Think tanks, start thinking about fees. Is it taxes? Is it fees? Is it incentives? So it's more, so to provide you information and to promote some further discussions that you can have to hopefully maybe generate additional revenue for the city. We'd be happy to help in any way we can, uh, for any questions that you have, but we just want to bring you into conversation.
Yeah, we have a new, um, we have some new things happening across the nation that could affect Pueblo. And by April, those, we can see how heavily it's weighing on the people. And I mean, so the time, time is, um, welcomed so that we can make a decision on what we're going to put on the ballot, I would think. Does, does council feel that way? That we still need to listen to a lot of things before we make decisions moving forward right now? Okay. All right, Dan. All right, thank you. And with that being said, the time is seven twenty-two P M on January sixth, twenty twenty-five, and we are adjourned.